The Quorum being present will call the meeting of the Tantascu Regional School Committee to order at 6:06 PM on December 17, 2024. I'll invite everyone to stand with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I will invite Mrs. Boyd to introduce the superintendent scholars.
All right. The first of our superintendent scholars this year is Jocelyn Rotek. And mom and dad. All right. I don't think I can do it without glasses anymore. Jocelyn had a GPA of 4.9 at the start of this school year. She's the vice president of National Honor Society and manages the NHS tutoring program. She's also a member of student council, editor of the school publication Passages, and prop manager for our show choir groups. Jocelyn is a member of the Rotary Youth Leadership Association and is a founding member and secretary of the Interact Club here, connecting our high school students with the Rotary community through community service. Jocelyn spent two weeks over the summer in Costa Rica completing a Spanish immersion program and now feels confident in her ability to communicate with native speakers. Jocelyn plans to major in either social justice, public policy, or peace and conflict studies with a double minor, just a little overachiever, in Spanish and gender sexuality and women's studies and hopes to go to Swatmore College, Colley University, or George Washington University. No definite yet, correct? Two weeks ago. On a personal note, Jocelyn wants to thank the Tantascu community that has created such a positive learning environment. She says they helped cultivate her love of learning and she hopes to be able to explore more in the future. Jocelyn's favorite quote is, "You don't have to be perfect, you have to be 100% committed." Jocelyn, congratulations. It says you've duly qualified under the standards and prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents to receive this award of Certificate of Academic Excellence. Can I smile this way? So we can get a picture, I'll send it to you. Wait. Got it. Thank you so much and congratulations. Next, we have Orion Voice. Come on over. Orion had a GPA of 4.8 at the start of this school year. He's a member of National Honor Society and the math team for which he has been a competition high scorer multiple times. Orion is an AP Scholar Award winner and has earned eligibility for the National Merit Scholarship based on his PSAT scores. Orion has been an all-state chorus member twice, performing at Symphony Hall, and has just recently been accepted to the National Association for Music Educators 2025 All-Eastern Honors Festival where he will join students from 11 of our U.S. northeastern states. He's a certified professional organist and he serves as the director of music at the Brimfield Congregational Church. He also volunteers at the Wales VFW and Wales Baptist Church serving community meals. Orion plans to major in community science, excuse me, computer science with a music flair, I hope, and hopes to go to MIT or UMass. On a personal note, Orion states that, "At age two, I was diagnosed with severe non-verbal autism disorder and I would like to thank all the early intervention professionals, therapists, and teachers throughout the years who put so much effort into enabling me to be a high-functioning high school student today." Orion's favorite quote is, "Don't practice until you get it right, practice until you can't get it wrong." Congratulations. Smile this way. Smile this way. Thank you, thank you. Oh, I can do it again. Thank you. Great, congratulations.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of November 19, 2024 as presented. Motion's been made by Mrs. Lloyd Miller, seconded by Mrs. Randall. Is there any discussion?
I have a correction. Um, I believe you.
Page?
On page four, under Cancations, I think you had said the matter referred to curriculum and bylaw and policy subcommittees.
Yes, opposed to one technical.
Yes, that's correct.
That's true.
Well, I can see a case for technical as well, but.
Yeah.
That's correct. Any other amendments, corrections? Seeing none, the chair will call for a vote. Goes in favor of the motion to accept the minutes as amended, will say aye. Oppose, nay. Extensions for the record? The motion carries. And now we move to the financial report. Mrs. Leo?
We are moving along with our expenditures in line with previous years. You may notice that our revenues appear to be lower than in prior years. Our, there was some accounting and we were doing some late balancing, so those numbers are catching up. My bookkeeper is working on those. So the lag is not in the state, it is in our bookkeeping. So we're moving forward and getting those fixed. And then the other expenditures are pretty much in line with what we've seen going through this year. I'll ask if there are any individual questions.
Questions for Mrs. Leo? Seeing none. So move to our student representatives. Good evening.
Good evening.
Who are you?
Good, how are you?
I want to go first.
I'll go first. The CAD students worked on bridge design by considering various loads and finding principles of equilibrium and selecting appropriate materials and utilizing mathematical equations. The students were able to design model bridges. Senior carpenters are close to complete, completing the roofing of the main house. The addition ties in the main house, creating two valleys, and the condition of the current roof was inadequate to provide a good connection and was in need of repair. The roofing was stripped off to the entire house and replaced by the students along with several sheets of damaged plywood. Weather permitting, they should be able to complete the roofing today and finish capping it tomorrow. Christmas break will be more enjoyable, knowing that the house is watertight and a major part of the building process is complete. The students will also be working on the exterior, soft that detail into carrying the deck ledger to the house in preparation for the Tress rain escape system that will be installed after vacation. In hospitality, the ninth grade has finished their sixth rotation of exploratory. They're on track for shop selection in March. The 10th grade is doing a unit on workplace safety and emergencies and creating emergency plans for the midterm. 11th grade is doing a unit on the front office of a hotel, creating a hotel front desk training annual for their midterm. And 12th grade is doing a unit on marketing and sales, coming up with a business plan for their midterm. And the senior centers and lake association have been dining in the bottom. In IT, the freshmen have just completed six out of their nine shop rotations. Sophomore are finishing off their 10-hour OC training. They are working to earn their PC Pro certifications and working on systems implementations, including Windows file systems, drivers, and storage systems. Juniors have finished PC Pro and will take their certificate exams after Christmas break. Seniors are working to earn their Security Pro certifications. They are working on network architectures, studying the structural design of a network and how to securely interconnect them to facilitate metadata transfer. Students continue to provide support and assistance by volunteering at the St. Mary's Senior Center. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
So as we gear into winter break, the student body is starting to face much-needed bottle of walled in terms of activities. So picking up where we left off last meeting, we had several events planned for late November and early December, the first of which I like to talk about was the food drive. So the food drive ended Friday, November 22nd. We had a great turnout. As a school, we were able to feed 15 families and get them through the Thanksgiving break and even give them a little extra food to break as well. So I thought that was a major success on our part. On November 27th, the student council held our annual pep rally. So we had several games to help engage the crowds. I like to point out juniors won the most, so that was awesome. We were also able to pie Dr. Dufresne in the face, which seemed to keep the crowd attentive. I believe that this year seemed to run much more smoothly than previous years because from what I was able to see, people seem to be much more willing to participate in the pep rally as well, which I thought was great. The toy drive began on December 2nd and ended last Friday, December 13th. Although people were slightly hesitant at first, we received a lot of donations from both our students and faculty. And overall, I thought that we as a school did a great job in clearing out our proclaimed wall of wishes. On Saturday, December 6th, student council held their annual Winter Warrior Day of Service. So they are members of our council and the student council at the junior high made blankets, holiday cards, blessing bags, and cat toys to donate to those in need. We had a great turnout. I don't know the exact number of people that were there. For reference, I was asked to buy eight dozens of donuts and about 100 marshkins to feed the volunteers. So overall, I believe everyone did a great job in helping give back to our community. So tomorrow, we have possibly the biggest event planned for the entire month, that being our mobile polar plunge hosted by the Special Olympics. I know last meeting, we talked about how we placed bounties on every teacher's heads with Dr. Dufresne holding the top spot at $5,000. So with just around 100 participants, our school was able to read, to reach a grand total of $8,648. And that would put Tantascu as the top fundraiser, beating North Reading's, North Reading High School's previous record of $5,000 for last year.
Wow.
So, and then they grant like a golden plunger to the highest, the highest fundraising school, so hopefully.
With your name on it.
And as for our last week before our holiday break, student council still has several activities to keep spirits high. So starting yesterday, we began our Winter Spirit Week. We have several spirit days planned out for this week. Yesterday was Candy Cane Day, which was red versus white. Today was Family Photo Day, so we asked students to wear a flannel or a blue sweater. Tomorrow is Winter Wonderland, so that was white outer polar plunge outfits. Thursday is Crazy Sock versus Crazy Hat Day. And Friday is the fan favorite Pajama Day. So this week, we've also started playing music and passing out goodies from the main lobbies before school to keep spirits high. So we bought things like rubber ducks, candy canes, Hershey kisses, hot chocolate, and people seem to be really enjoying them. So towards the end of this week, we also had a gingerbread house contest planned. We have received several submissions for that contest and we will be giving out beverage coffee house gift cards as a reward for the best, the best group design and best solo design. And then towards the end of the week as well, student council also plans to push around our teacher, oh, push around our teacher trolley cart, delivering treats to our teachers before break, as well as make goodie bags for the bus drivers of our district just to show them how much we appreciate all their work. Winter sports have already begun and things seem to be looking up. Basketball had their first games last week, swim had their first meet last week, hockey had their first game last Saturday, and indoor track has their first meet this Wednesday. And things seem to be looking up for the Warriors. The last thing I'd like to talk about at this meeting is something student council has been planning for the last several months, and we like to call that the Warrior Spirit Card. And it will be an incentive for students to participate in school-related activities by serving as a punch card. So we plan on getting different hole punches for different score-related events, such as attending sports games, you'll get a punch, and then attending like a musical or concerts, you'll get a different punch, and then spirit days, you'll get a different punch from that. So we are working on creating prizes that we could give to the people with the most hole punches, and we're looking to implement that idea in the new year. And that's pretty much all I have for the moment.
Questions for our student representatives? Questions for us? Have a good holiday.
Thank you. Can we take a video of the plunge?
I gotta move. Multiple.
I wanna see that.
Let's ask the camera crew here.
There we go, right?
The kids work really hard and we're really proud of them. Eighty-five hundred, we were, we were never spending $5,000.
Yeah. Thank God you were popular. Isn't there a song?
All right, this time, we move to staff reports. Mr. Sturgis.
Yeah, so we had our winter contests last week, band and chorus, we had the two-night doubleheader. Seventh grade went, Washington's second, eighth grade went first. As many of you, well, we all know, since we talked about it at the curriculum subcommittee in October, we have actually shifted the bands every day in our schedule this year for the first time, band and chorus, and it showed. So you have the June performances or the end of May performances. It's always sounds significantly better when they do in December, we're halfway, we sound like we're at the end of the year, like skill-wise. Kids tonight, we just saw, they only had one practice, and that was for an hour after school because they're supposed to practice on the snow day that Mr. Boyd promised you would call. So that snow day canceled their own other practice. But I'm glad Mr. Valenzol pointed it out, for those guys to come out for 15-minute performances, they don't drive, so I appreciate their parents as well getting them out here. But the concerts were amazing. They really sounded like high schools. They sounded like a high school band at the performance. So, and the chorus was excellent. Seventh grade, I had more kids on stage, so the volume was definitely louder, seventh grade and eighth grade, but they did a great, both grades did an awesome job. Similar to the high school, we had a food drive. We provide holiday baskets at Thanksgiving time to all of our families. We have 33 families this year we were able to give a full Thanksgiving dinner to, turkey donated by staff, community members. We have one anonymous donor who said they'll never donate again if we say their name out loud, but they donated 10 turkeys at the midnight hour, and they were only at the midnight hour because they were waiting to see how many we needed. They were gonna fill out 33 baskets if we needed 33 or 10, so they waited, they waited, and filled them all out. McNucks, as they always do, gave us fresh produce for our families as well. What we were able to do, which is we gave out a lot, which we kind of drained the well. So for Christmas, the holiday season, we give out baskets as well to the same families. We actually ask for anyone who asks for help or happy to help. But during the Christmas season, we like to give them Tantascu gear, so the parents can give to the kids as presents, and it doesn't look like it stands out as something that was donated because everybody has Tantascu, a lot of Tantascu gear. So we had two things happen. Middle school kids, you need stuff to unmake it a competition. So made a food drive war where they can, a winning grade gets a party, which the eighth grade, in a rare occurrence, eighth grade had high participation and beat up the seventh grader for a donut party after the break. But we refilled, restocked our supply for food for our families. And then our student council did our first-ever bingo night on Saturday, which brought in an astronomical amount of money for $5 bingo tickets and a couple of families who donated baskets, we have a couple of families that own businesses in town, donated holiday baskets that were raffled off, and we raised over $1,300 in the two-hour window. That was going on to gift cards for those same families, Walmart, Shaw's, Hanford gift cards that can help them out during the holiday season. It's tough on some of our families still. And then the last, but not least, we did kick off the winter athletic season this week. Actually, a basketball game last, one game last week, we had another game, running games today. But some fun, middle school, we do still have fun, and junior high, we had our door decorating contest today. This is the second year of what hopes to become a very communal activity. I actually wish this meeting was in our building for once, so you can go walk you around and see the building right now. The doors are, range from awesome to hilarious. Clark Griswold hanging from the door. We have, I think, the kid from the Christmas Carol on one door. And then we have a bunch of different Polar Express trains taking over the hallways. So I gotta thank the teaching staff, everyone kind of, even those who don't really want to do those kinds of activities. We had a good positive day today at school for the kids. It was really enjoyable. And so a lot going on in this time of year for us. Anyone have any questions for me?
Questions for Mr. Sturgis?
It should be noted, coincidence or not, that the junior high spirit week also ends in pajama day Friday, so there's a whole lot of holiday pajamas. The superintendent might really have to dig into her.
We called the junior high a way to keep kids calm the week before a holiday break if you have a door decorating.
Why not?
So.
Roll out of bed in pajamas. There you go. Pajamas all around Friday.
I thought we'd call it get dressed up day, be a little bit.
Mr. Wood?
All righty, so I'm gonna start with health careers. Tomorrow is their range of motion dance, which started about 12 years ago when Ms. Gonzalez had all the kids do what you would do with patients in a nursing home, or a rest home. And what ends up happening is they, it's evolved into groups doing them, and it's to Christmas music, and it only scares me when they throw the kids in the air, because that's a little, but it's just awesome. The kids practice the dance, and some people are quite reluctant, but they still pull up to the team, so I'm looking forward to that. What is also cool is the health career seniors, and this has again been going on for about 10 years, they go to Quabag Uncommon, they work with the residents there, they're just finishing up their time with, at that place. But what they do is they do a Christmas party for the residents, and the kids donate the money to buy the gifts. They really, what everybody wants, and when I looked today, I think they had like 85 gifts wrapped and were still wrapping more. And it's just an awesome idea. They wore short Santa suit because they've always had someone to donate, so we made sure we bought one, so they will have one for now, moving forward, and that's all good. I want to piggyback on what Ethan said, the bridge project that the kids in CAD do were amazing. It was so cool going in to talk to them, to find out what the inspiration was, and then what types of bridges they were and how they work. So that was a great project. Carpentry, junior carpentry kids, under Mr. Ward, they are out of the building more than they ever were. They're doing outside projects, they're working on a house right now, they're working on the deck there, and they're also working with the conservation group on kiosks and benches. So those kids are always out of the building. The CAD architecture groups right now is really kind of cool when you go in, they're working Revit, doing their, their regular plans, but then they have to build up models, the 3D models of the plans, and that's really creative when you see kids making waterfalls and everything else, and it's all like with hot glue guns. And it's just, it's phenomenal to watch how they work. Just, just a couple of things, the applications are rolling in, we had our, as we know, we had our groups with the kids coming through last month and the parents, so those are coming in, and we had to do our, our DESI admissions report, which we changed, and that's all done, so Life is Grand, we put that away, and we have no more reports due until next year. Thank goodness.
Questions for Mr. Wood? And Mr. Wood, Dr. Dufresne?
Thank you. Our highlight of the month was our mathematics department. We spend a lot of time working with data and math department leads the way. One of the things that they always do is take a look at our MCAS item analysis plans to identify specific gaps in mathematics through learning and self-targeting structural plan. Last year, the result of that work, we added more geometric transformations to our curriculum, and we saw an improvement on this topic with the exception of one question. They go down to each question and each sort of thread and see if there are test-taking skills that we can assist with, or the kind of gaps we can assist with, and we saw some, we saw some positive growth in that area. Financial literacy was officially introduced here at Tantascu last spring by the math department to juniors and seniors at the CBA level. Some topics, as you can imagine, were prepare students for sort of the near future and the distant future. We discuss things like car loans, mortgages, why credit cards are a bad idea, how to make a budget, what all this hullabaloo about student loans is and is going to be, and how to manage their money on a daily basis. I think this is a valuable piece for our students, and it's something that I hope in the future we make mandatory. Math department applied for and has been accepted to Mu Alpha Theta Mathematics Honor Society. It is an organization that partners with professional mathematics organizations, and high schools and two-year colleges can apply to be a member. We were accepted, and their purpose is the promotion of scholarship and the enjoyment and understanding of mathematics. Our math team finished third place in Division B of the Worcester County Math League in the 23-24 school year. Leading scorer for Tantascu was Orion Voice. Our AP results are on there, as you can see, for mathematics, percent of students earning a passing score in AP Calculus AB, AP Calculus BC, and AP Calculus AP was 100, pardon, was 100%, got three or four above. And we had, we actually have two sections of AP Calculus running with a total of 44 students, which as I am told, the first time in Tantascu history, we've had two sections of AP Calculus. Our math department is actually one of the more fun departments in the building, and feels like they have a theme for everything, so we put a little bit of math fun in there with their Tantascu Math Friend Blade, a friendship bracelet from Halloween. Erica Savia gets a lot of credit for that, she comes up with an awful lot of creative ideas. We've been updated on student council by our friend Ben. Month of December's been full of holiday performances, the winter festival went smoothly. We have, or had, had three different concerts coming up. And show choir performance season is upon us, I believe we host on February 8th. And again, I left in there, everyone auditioned for the Mass Educators, Music Educators Association Central District Senior Band. There's a list of students there, and they will perform on Saturday, January 18th at 4 o'clock in the stadium hall. I listed our all-stars for athletics for fall as well, we've had almost too many to list, and we're proud of our student athletes, not just for the victories on the field, but how they, in the core, how they, how they carry themselves and walk with it. And then I just wanted to make a note, our pool application is up and running and calls are coming in, and the pool will be full of birthdays and trivalities soon. Feel free to book your birthday party at any time. And we're really proud, Mark and I were talking the other day, just as a close, about how proud we are just to be here and the way the faculty handle the very difficult time of year, and just, just feeling grateful to work in this building, these folks, and the student council kids just doing an amazing job, and we're really lucky to have, to raise 80, almost 8,600 dollars in pretty much two weeks is impressive, and thank you to those of you who contributed and brought it, and so we'll be jumping.
I said I would.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I made sure the check cashed and.
If it bounced, I'd have to go to Mrs. Carbone's financial.
I just had a question. For the pool application process, is that just a link on the school's website?
It is, it's on our website right now. We may figure out a better way to promote it, but I think once it starts to get.
Oh, word will spread, sorry. I'm getting the links on Unapay this week, so we can also. Are you gonna be doing the swimming also for the little kids again?
So we are gonna sort of build a solid base, train a group of lifeguards, and then open it up, there'll be some open swim in the weekends and some birthday parties in the weekends to get started. I've been told that it was open at various points during the week prior to COVID. I would look to make sure that we have parking and some, I don't want, I'm not well enough to mitigate any safety issues.
That is the challenge. From a community perspective, a lot of our community doesn't realize we cannot make the pool available during our school hours. So years ago, we did try a morning or two, a very early morning, because obviously we wouldn't be able to have the public in beyond 7 o'clock the latest. There wasn't a lot, but there was a little, so at some point, we may try one sort of open swim morning and see what the interest is, but that is a struggle that sometimes it, community's a little taken back to realize we can't just leave the pool during the school day. So we try and find whatever time we can. I think years ago, to your point, there was probably occasional swim lessons. I don't know that we have that planned in the next six to nine months, but by the time we get to next summer, then hopefully we'll be in a place that we could actually, we did some kind of fee-for-service swim lessons separate from the summer camp that we do some swimming, so we hope to build up to that, but. Because I know that was really, really popular. Yeah, it was pop to get in there.
Like waiting, waiting in the line outside.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was a fight, not literally, but. All four of my kids.
Is that how that happened?
Yeah.
You should see the other guy.
It was culinary camp, right?
So we're at least actively rebuilding, which is better than waiting.
We're hopeful to build this out.
Yeah.
Questions for Dr. Dufresne? Dr. Dufresne? Committee reports, Mrs. Lloyd Miller?
kind of fee-for-service swim lessons separate from the summer camp that we do some swimming. So we hope to build up to that, but.
Because I know that was really, really popular. It was tough to get in there.
Like waiting, waiting in the line outside.
Yeah, it was a fight, not Little Rody, but. All four of my kids.
Is that how that happened?
Yeah.
You should see the other guy.
Culinary camp.
We're at least actively rebuilding, which is better than waiting.
We're hopeful to build this out.
Questions for Dr. Dufrain? Committee reports, Mrs. Joyce Miller?
We did not have a meeting. As I mentioned last month, we have our annual budget, January 25th. Definitely we have an exact date. But we'll hang out at school.
It's about 8:30, 9:00. They're always aggressively saying 8:00 or 8:30 until you get close. And then all of a sudden, they're like, I don't know, maybe not. So I mean, I have 9:00 in here, could be as early. I wouldn't go any earlier than 8:30 and think everybody is actually gonna make it.
So unless something comes up, we will not be late until then.
All right. Technical?
No meeting.
We're doing.
We met last night. It was a relatively brief meeting, but some really good discussion. We talked about some of the program of studies changes, including three new courses, Introduction to Weightlifting, Introduction to Fitness, and a Warrior CrossFit course. Those will all come before the full committee for official approval. But we did have unanimous support at the subcommittee of all three. And also.
What were the first two I heard?
I'm sorry, Introduction to Weightlifting, Intro to Fitness, and Warrior CrossFit.
Right.
Yeah, all P. And then last year's new course, which was First Year Foundations, has been very successful. So I think it's important to mention that. But then we, we had Julie Donovan from the guidance department. She walked us through the scholarship process again, some improvements that have been made to streamline the process and the timeline that is set. So that started in November with a breakfast for all of our grantees. And then just sort of the various check-in points, including one of the improvements was a standardized or universal application. So that has gotten a lot better. I think that's pretty much it. Our next meeting will be Monday, February 3rd at 6:00 PM.
All right, thank you very much. Just a bio policy, Mrs. Fitzgerald, are you giving us a Christmas present this year?
It deserves, Mr. Valen. We didn't meet in December, lucky for the group. And we have no report and we will meet again on January 8th.
Merry Christmas to us. Brings us to negotiations, Mrs. Randall.
I believe we'll be meeting in executive session that weekend.
And the building physical plant.
We'll be, yeah, hoping to have one in January.
All right, before we move to the superintendent's report, we did have a trip request from Dr. Dufrain.
Apologize, I couldn't put this in my report. The Save Club, which is a club supported by the Sandy Hook Promise folks and fairly active here in our building, looking out for building safety, social emotional safety, ways to welcome students in. They are offering a leadership institute in April for five, I would like to send five students. It is in April to Friday and a Saturday, April 25th and April 26th. The cost, honestly, for the conference itself is almost negligible. The cost would be involved in traveling by train, train to the conference, which is in Philadelphia. We have five students going, two chaperones. And I offered to sort of present this, but Ms. Redd, the advisor to the club's a little bit of an old geezer. So she showed up anyway. Any questions, I want to make sure I answer correctly. They have fundraising activities in place to help offset the cost. One of those is the Sandy Hook Promise Scholarship, which they have applied for and I'm fairly confident they are going to get. And then they have some other opportunities for students to be able to fundraise. Trip being in April, I'm fairly certain that we can cover all that, all those expenses, all that kind of fundraiser. So because it's an overnight trip and it's out of state, it does require, I believe by your, your bylaws, to approve.
And are the chaperones covering their own cost or is that being covered by the money raised by the students?
So the cost would be, for them would be just a hotel and the train tickets and they'll be covered by the funders.
It'd be covered by the funders. So that will require an exemption for the chaperones or the old staff members?
They are.
And how will the students select them?
So the students were selected by the Save Club. I believe they're the executive board, Miss Redd, if you may.
Yes, they're the executive board.
Any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of Dr. Dufrain and approval of the Save Promise overnight trip for five students and two chaperones. The two chaperones of whom will be covered by an exemption by us of the conflict of interest law. Motion's been made. Motion's been made by Mrs. Cunningham, seconded by Mrs. Randall. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Seeing none by unanimous consent, the motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, that'll bring us to the superintendent's report. Mrs. Ward?
Not, not a lot that hasn't already been talked about, shared and celebrated tonight. So just circling back on a couple of previous reports, just.
You're doing the whole.
Yeah, no. But I could be one of those recording.
Now that's a bigger check to write.
So I will wear my Christmas pajamas Friday. That is a big one. Just a reminder, we are in executive session, gonna talk a little bit about negotiations issue. But there are three units off this year. So Unit C, which is your classroom professionals, Unit D, which is your administrative assistants and central office bookkeepers, and the custodians and cafeterias. So this will be a busy, busy year for your negotiation subcommittee. Those of you who did not sign up for it, you were smart. So we'll get going, I'm sure, right after the holidays, one of them.
We usually like to start those after the holidays.
But we don't want all three of them going at the same time, which has happened. So hopefully we can spread them out. Just FYI, you didn't mention during budget, we did finally get rural aid figures, which is in the 700, 750,000 range that we got last year. So good news, we figured, it's, it's what we were hoping for. Reminder, we've already spoken for probably about 150 with two positions that we agreed to fund from that. So that's awesome. Our plan is in January to have both a building and physical plant subcommittee meeting as well as budget to present our suggestions for spending the rest, which will likely be very connected to the capital plan. So last year, what's what we did first is to then not build any cliffs and worrying about back then, it never goes away, is to look at our capital items, either things we didn't think of that were needed this year or more importantly, as we build next year's capital plan, we might turn around and say, let's take care of that and deal with rural aid. So more to come and we'll present that in. It'd be nice by the January meeting, but it might be right after because budget doesn't be until after that. So that's, that's it for me.
All right, any questions for Mr. Boyd? Yes.
Can you just tell us what's going on with the Sturridge transportation?
Well, somehow we're getting children to school every day, not always exactly on time. But Sturridge has, Sturridge does not contract out. They own, so to speak, the fleet and the drivers. They have been short drivers since the end of last year. And every step forward turns into a step back. So there have been some new, there's two currently training that we think will be driving by after the holidays. They are also negotiating for next year. So we're doing everything we can and being as creative as possible. We have called many of our neighboring contractors who just shuffle. When we say, do you have any extra drivers we could contract out? You know, we will pay you. And they are in as much of a mess as we are. So it does continue to be a, I think, national, but certainly locally, a real challenge getting CDL drivers. But we're plodding along. I, I'm not sure, I could say I see the light at the end of the tunnel, but I see progress. So hopefully after the new year, we have a couple of new train, new drivers that have been training for the last month certified and we just keep pulling away.
But if you know anyone that wants to be a bus driver, we're taking referrals.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Gotta up that pay.
It's not all about money, just like everything else, it is absolutely not all about money. There's a workforce problem. And unfortunately, drivers historically have been retirees. And the workforce diminished significantly during COVID and now is not necessarily something that's appealing or appetizing, so.
The pay has been increased more than.
It has, the pay's been nearly significant.
Other questions for Mrs. Boyd? Seeing none, we have no unfinished business, no new business, public access? Open forum? Good, sure. Open forum? Wish for this thing to open forum? All right, seeing none at this time, I'll request a motion to enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. Committee will return from executive session merely for the purpose of adjournment.
I actually think there's gonna be a vote needed.
There's a vote needed?
Well, I think a public vote for what? We're recommending.
Okay, yes, we do, sorry.
Which is why we're gonna go back into as opposed to.
The committee will return to regular session. Is there a motion? Motion, maybe, Mrs. Cunningham, seconded by Mrs. Randall. It does require a roll call vote, Valensol, yes?
Valensol, yes. Coco, yes? Lamarcane, yes?
Dunn, yes.
Jay, yes?
Paul Sanchez, yes?
Cunningham, yes?
Bobo, yes?
Fitzgerald, yes?
Randall, yes?
All right, we will move into executive session. I'll ask those members that are, those folks that are not members of the committee to please exit. We'll recess for three minutes just to give folks an opportunity to leave the room. All right, re-entering our open session. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the MOU between the Tantasca Regional School Committee and the Tantasca Education Association for the purposes of Unit A Sig Bank. Motion's been made by Mrs. Joyce Miller, seconded by Mrs. Randall. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Seeing none by unanimous consent, the motion carries. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Made by Mrs. Joyce Miller, seconded by Mr. Dunn. All those who favor the motion will say aye. Motion carries, have a wonderful holiday.